This is the February 2016 zoning board of appeals. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, United States of America, and to the Congress with which you stand, on one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite and endless.
Roll call please.
We've been advised by Mr. Haberman, Mr. Vassino, and Ms. Egelson that they will not attend tonight, so I will call the remaining members. Mr. Chisola?
Here.
Ms. Ferrante?
Here.
Mr. Sota?
Here.
Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Also President Meg Green, our recording secretary, Stephen Harris, our zoning officer. Mr. Thomas, will you fill in for Mr. Vassino tonight, please?
Certainly.
Mr. Dubois, you will fill in for Mr. Haberman, okay? Okay. If anyone feels that there's a member on this board that might be a conflict of interest to their hearing, please let us know, otherwise we will proceed.
Item number one, 49 Bedford Avenue, Zone R 12.5, Patrick Thompson and Karen Thompson owners, section 3-1-4-1, front yard setback to 19.47 feet where 25 feet required for 12 feet by 20 feet addition, map 45, block 507, parcel 1.
Are you speaking on this one? Item number one, Bedford?
Yes.
Please come forward. State your name and your address, please.
Karen Thompson.
Pat Thompson, 49 Bedford Ave.
Please tell us of your intentions on your plans, on what you plan on doing.
So we have an existing 10 by 20 screened-in porch with a roof deck, and it's currently rotting and the roof deck is unsafe. You can touch the electrical going into the house from there, and we want to demolish that and put in instead a 12 by 20 two-story structure with a foundation. So it would have a downstairs playroom, and then upstairs would be an extension of the master bathroom, or the master bedroom. So the existing is 10 by 20, and the proposed is 12 by 20, so the difference in the footprint is two feet.
We only have one variance here that you need, front yard setback to 19.47 where 25 is required. It's the only setback you need, correct?
Correct.
Is there a foundation there right now, or you're just going to reconstruct everything pretty much on the same footprint?
It's pretty much on the same footprint. There's not a foundation right now. It's on piers, so we would want to put a foundation in.
Any questions?
10 feet going to 12 feet, so it was already infringing in the 25-foot setback.
Yes, it already was, yes.
Mr. Sota?
So you're making it two foot wider?
Correct.
And what is your hardship?
The existing structure is not in good condition. We have kids, and we want to-
No, the hardship goes with the land.
The land.
What is your hardship for the land?
When we bought the house, we were under the impression, we looked at the, when they built the screened-in porch, and it showed the property line going all the way to the street, when in fact it doesn't go all the way to the street. So we thought, when we bought the house, that there was enough property to-
So there's three plot maps on record with the town that have been signed off on that show our property going to the street, that we were under the impression that that was, it would be okay when we bought the house.
Y'all set, Mr. Sota? Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? If you're speaking in favor, please come forward.
Good evening. Bill Caganello, Homestead Construction. I was, I have a contract to do the work here. When I investigated for the plans, I did go to planning and zoning, and I looked, and three officials from past administrations signed off on this property, assuming it was, we had plenty of room. So that was our intentions, all good intentions, to do this, and I went down to see Mr. Harris, and he said, "No, this isn't going to work." But when these folks bought the house in June?
July.
July of this year, they're new owners, they checked it all up, and all the assumptions were made that we could have done this, and all of a sudden, no, it wouldn't work. So we went through the procedures, got a survey. The existing structure will not accept a second level, so that's why we have to take it down. If it was that easy to accept a second level, money-wise, time-wise, it would be better to do it like that, to save everybody some money and some effort. But in this case, it won't pass the current building codes. But like I said, the hardship, I think, is that in the past administrations, everybody signed off on it, and we were on the assumption everything was fine. And all of a sudden, we went through all the nuts and bolts and got a survey. We used Nino, who's been with the city for years, he's an engineer, you probably know him, Nino DiNocolo, he did it all, and you must have that map with you. Did you present the map to him?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I felt that was a legitimate hardship for these folks. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Any members of the board have any questions? No? Okay. Mr. Sota?
Why wouldn't 10 feet be sufficient?
Because when you put in a foundation, it actually will make the, with the walls, it makes the room smaller, and we wanted a playroom for-
No, that's untrue, it doesn't. Down below, in the basement, it makes it smaller, but not up top.
Well, the screened-in porch right now is 10 feet, so I mean, that's just the screen. So we'll actually make it a little bit smaller with the walls.
Thickness of the wall.
Yeah, on both sides.
Anything else? No? Y'all set? Okay, this hearing's closed. I think for some of the reasons we've heard, as far as what the hardship would be, and looking at what actually is, it's still almost 20 feet from that addition to the street, it's a corner lot, there's plenty of room for it, I feel. What your thoughts might be?
It sounds like they did the research ahead of time and were under the impression that their plan would have gone through without a variance, so I have a hard time saying no if it's kind of an administrative fault.
Any other comments? If not, we need a motion.
Well, my feeling is, for zoning to comment without a survey, it's kind of hard for them to comment on something when they're not looking at a survey. They're looking at their maps, but those aren't surveys.
Mr. Thomas, any thoughts?
Existing structure that's there is still a non-conformity.
Okay, we're going to need a motion on this either way. I'm feeling that, that they are improving on the structure that's there, you know.
And I agree with what you said, there's plenty of room on the lot, and the house is not angled with the property line, it's a difficult corner. I make a motion to accept.
I'll second the motion.
Motion based on the placement of the house and the documents in the file prior to purchase.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second on the motion. Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Mr. Thomas?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it passes.
Item number two, 16 Rogers Ave., Zone R 12.5, Ron Durelio, architect for Kathleen Callahan Rotundo and Mark Rotundo owners, section 3-1-4-1, south side yard setback to seven feet where 10 feet required, north side yard setback to seven feet where 10 feet required, 4-1-4, south side yard eve, projection to six feet where eight feet permitted, north side yard deck projection to six feet where eight feet permitted, north side yard window seat projection to seven feet where eight feet permitted, map 44, block 409, parcel 7.
My name's Rohan Durelio, I'm the architect for the project. My address, 69 Sasekus Drive, Milford, Connecticut. We're asking the ZBA Board to approve the variances that were just read. Our hardship is that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. Currently, this property is a two-family residence, and the new owners intend to convert it to a single-family home. The property has a fantastic view of Milford Harbor, and the house is located high above the flood plain. In addition to some interior renovation we plan on doing and replacing the exterior finishes, we're proposing to add a one-car garage to the right side of the structure. Currently, there is an exterior staircase in this location, which will be removed. That staircase, for the two-family house, was used as an entrance to the top-floor unit. It's kind of an eyesore, and once we convert to a single-family, we won't need the staircase anymore. We are keeping the width of the garage to 12 feet, which is pretty much a minimum of having a decent-sized garage on the side of the house. We want to minimize the encroachment to the side yard. There is a bay window there that we will be removing in order to keep that garage as close to the house as possible. In the rear of the garage, there will be some room for storage, for yard tools, and a mudroom for entry to the home. The storage area will help to eliminate the need for a shed in the backyard. In addition to the variance requested for the garage, we also have to request a variance for the one-foot overhang, which is typical on a house, to have the roof overhang a slight bit, and that's because we're exceeding the 20% encroachment into the side yard. Above the storage area, we're proposing a second floor addition in the same area. On the opposite side of the house, we're proposing to fill in essentially what is an existing alcove area of the house in order to expand the kitchen and a closet above. The addition on the left side of the house will actually remain further back from the side property line than the existing house. Okay. On the rear of the house, which has a wonderful view of the harbor, the owners would like to expand their deck. Right now, the deck just goes halfway across the house on the rear wall. They would like to bring it all the way across. That puts us into the side yard setback area, but we're not going past where the house is now. Also, on the same wall, the rear wall of the house, the owners would like to put a window seat and maximize the view, so that also will project into the side yard, but will not go past where the existing house is now. I have some photographs, or I could take some questions from the board, and I do have a letter from a neighbor in support that I'd like to present to the board.
Do you want to read the letter in-
Sure.
-to the record, and then you could pass it in, or you can just pass it to us, it's up to you?
I'll read it. It says, "I, Ray Denault of 23 Rogers Ave., am the neighbor of Mark and Kathy Rotundo of 16 Rogers Ave. I would like to express my support of granting the variances needed to make improvements to the property located at 16 Rogers Ave. I attest that I have no objection to the plans being presented and welcome them to the neighborhood. I also own property at 11 Tippi Road and have witnessed the improvements performed at their 79 Canterbury Lane property. They were an asset to that neighborhood, and I have no doubt that they would continue that trend as my new neighbor. Signed, Ray Denault, 23 Rogers Ave., Milford, Connecticut."
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my comments.
As far as questions for you, you had mentioned the staircase, that's going to go away because of the addition that's being put on, correct?
Yes.
The rear deck that you had mentioned, there's one there right now, 12 by 15?
Yes.
You want to go all the way across, so it's going to be 12 by 30?
12 by 15, and 12 by 12, 15 and 12, 27.
That's why you need the variance on that corner, because of the-
Yes.
-that deck being bigger. For this gentleman?
Where's the garage? That he talked about?
Okay. Yep. And this was a two-family house?
Right now, it is a two-family house, yes.
Mr. Harris, any change in the record to do this because it was a two-family going, going to a single? It's not like it's the other way around, that it would cause any-
I believe it's a legal two-family.
It'll still stay a legal, well, it's-
Yeah. I believe there's prior zoning relief for a two-family.
No matter what they do to the house, it's still going to have that.
Yeah, they could re-convert if they felt like it.
You are converting it back to a single family?
Converting it to a single family right now?
Yes.
So it won't be a two-family anymore?
They're going to take out the upstairs kitchen and all that and turn it into a master bedroom.
So it's going to, it's converting it to a one-family?
It's going to be a single family, yeah.
Okay. What is also your hardship?
The fact that the lot is a non-conforming lot, it doesn't have the required width, lot width.
Any other questions for this gentleman?
How far from the side of the house do the exterior stairs project right now?
I'm thinking those stairs, well, I have the measurements, actually, I could tell you what I measured. They come out six foot five from the house, plus 110, so right now, it would be about eight foot three from the house, and we want to put a 12-foot structure from the I could show you a picture if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, everybody should be talking into the microphone.
I just advised her.
I was just asking how far towards the front of the house the garage would come?
It will set back about 10 feet.
Okay.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Any final questions? No? Okay. I think the only thing I have in question is this change in size of the rear deck, only because it creates a variance back there. We've looked at things like this before, and when there's two or three or four variances, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to approve everything, we can exclude one or the other.
Joe, can we do that without them changing? Stephen, can we do that?
You don't have to approve every variance or any variance, or you can approve them all.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to make the deck bigger, they could always push the deck further out towards the water and get the same square footage.
Well, that was my thought, it's to, you know, to eliminate one of the variances. If there's, yeah, we're here to give variances for, you know, hardships, but if there's ways around it, then we, there's no reason to do it. You can approve the other two and exclude that one, if that's what you're thinking, or if you think, you know, you want to approve everything the way it is, that's also up to the board.
I don't see a problem, you know, with making the deck smaller, because they can push it out, and they make the window seat a little smaller, put a narrower window in, and then approve the other two.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to approve the two side variances, but to deny the rear deck and window seat variance.
Second.
Mr. Sota, can you actually read what those variance, what the variance that you want to deny is? Read it right off the application, just for clarity.
Can Sarah do it, because she read the thing I said? Come on, Sarah.
It's right on there, it's right on here, the motion.
I'm looking at the item here. The wind, you mentioned the window seat. That would be the north side, north side yard window seat projection to seven feet where eight feet is permitted. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
And that's the one that you made a motion to deny?
Yes.
And the deck?
Yes.
Okay. So it's the north side yard deck projection to six feet where eight feet is permitted, and the north side yard window seat projection to seven feet where eight feet is permitted. Those are the two that you want to deny, is that correct?
All right, so I just read the two I'm denying, or-
I believe I just read them, so.
Okay, so we're good?
Okay.
Thanks, Stephen.
Now, we have a motion, we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it passes. Well, it passes with the exceptions.
Item, item number three, 0 Westmore Road, Zone R 12.5, Thomas Lynch Esquire, attorney for Charlene Adams owner, section 2-5-5 vary to allow private driveway to access lots certified per section 6-4-2, in lieu of municipally acceptable street, map 30, block 644, parcel 5.
Good evening, Mr. Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trimbickie and Boynton, and my office is located here in front of 60th and Cherry That was Mr. Sota. That was Mr. Sota running a map across a microphone. So I came tonight to present an application to you on behalf of my client, Charlene Adams. Ms. Adams is the owner of property at 188 Point Beach Drive here in Milford. She also owns two lots that were certified by order of Mr. Harris's predecessor, Linda Stock, who was the zoning enforcement officer. There's, in the zoning office file, certificates of zoning compliance that were issued in 2007 to recognize two lots that appear on the Merwin Estates subdivision map from 2012 as legal, non-conforming lots, in accordance with the procedures that we have to follow under section 642 of our zoning regulations. I was bringing to you tonight an application that was made in concert with discussions with my client, her builder, Pat Devine, who is also here with me tonight, and I was also hopeful to having the Public Works Director of the City of Milford, Chris Salee, here tonight as well. But when I walked into the auditorium tonight, I was handed a four or five-page memo from Steve Harris. To be perfectly honest with you, I was in my office all afternoon, I was in my office until five minutes before coming into this building. Steve put together a memo outlining certain things that he is raising in objection to this application. I did inquire as to why I wasn't provided a copy of the memo prior to me walking in tonight, and unfortunately, I won't go any further, it just didn't happen. So with that said, I'd like to open this hearing, I'd like to continue it to the May meeting, I'd like to be able to address the concerns that Mr. Harris raised in this memorandum that was prepared for tonight's hearing, which I just received some 20 minutes ago, and I'd ask your indulgence for that.
You'd like to move it to the March meeting?
I'd like-
Just for a point of clarification, if you're asking for an extension, it would be to the March meeting, not May, right?
Did I say May?
You said May.
Sorry, March.
You hardly ever make any mistakes, both, so let that one go.
I'm going to be meeting with Steve for another application very shortly that I will put together for the March meeting, so I would be here anyway, but I would ask that the matter be continued to the March 2016 meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we need a motion from this board to continue this to next month, please?
I make a motion, we continue this hearing till the March meeting.
All in favor, continuing? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Item number three, Westmore Road will be continued. Yes. If... You can step up to the microphone, please.
I'm Liz Shepherd. I live at 180 Point Beach Drive. I was wondering if I can get a copy of what was sent in to you, or if that is not allowed.
Okay.
We would like to see what has transpired.
If you'd like to...
Here's a copy.
Probably would... Oh, of the...
Can you hand these out?
The objections.
Can you hand them out?
Yes. We have additional copies.
Item number four, 245 First Avenue, Zone R 10. Thomas Lynch Esquire, attorney for Lawrence Shambram, owner. Section 3-1-4-1, north side yard setback to 6.1 feet where 10 feet required, and 5.3 feet where 10 feet required. West front yard setback to 21.8 feet where 25 feet required. South front yard setback to 17.8 feet where 25 feet required for addition to residence. Map 6, Block 82, Parcel 1.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Thomas Lynch, representing Lawrence and Sheri Shambram, who are seated behind me and with me here tonight, came back from their vacation for this meeting. Were before you tonight with an application to allow them to do certain renovations and remodeling of their residence located at 245 First Avenue in the Laurel Beach section of Milford. So we presented to you a site plan that was put together by Cottis Bodian Associates. The Shambrams have owned this property since 1991. They've basically used it as their summer residence. They rented it out to seasonal rents, academic rents during the year during the course of their ownership. And now, with their children having grown up and moved out, the intent is for them to move into the house and occupy it as their full-time residence. They've hired Ray Oliver, who's well-known to all of us as an excellent architect here in Milford, to put together redesigned floor plan and elevations for the remodeling. But I wanted to start off with just talking a little bit about the existing situation on site. The house is roughly 1,900 square feet in size. It was constructed in 1903. It's located on a lot that, under today's standards, is nine...
Excuse me, Mr. Lynch. Just... Will you please take your conversation to the rear, please, because we can hear you up front talking?
Okay, thanks. The lot is a non-conforming lot. It consists of some 5,322 square feet in the R 10 zone. So under today's standards, this is a non-conforming lot. The hardship is created by the fact that the house is required to carry two front yard setbacks because of the fact that it's located on First Avenue, the corner of First Avenue and Seaview. The basic thrust of what's going on with this remodeling and renovation is that the footprint of the house is not going to be expanded other than moving backward and forward in terms of building over existing porches. Right now, if you look at the elevations, and I'll get to them on the second and third sheet, but the front of the house, as it fronts onto First Avenue, currently has a porch. So Ray's plans are to move the living space onto the area now occupied by the porch. And similarly, in the rear of the property, there's rear decking that's now going to have construction above it. So the footprint of the house doesn't extend. It's basically living area that's now going to be in space that are projections. There's also the two first and second level decks on the side of the house. So because of the fact that there will be living space created in the front porch area, that necessitated the application for the front yard variance. But it's very important to note, I think we talked about this when we were going over the applications up on Tanglewood Circle, the fact that a front yard variance here entails measurement from the structure to the deed line, but there's approximately 13 feet additional beyond the deed line before you get to the pavement, the surface pavement on First Avenue. So really, it's a misnomer here, because there is approximately 30 feet of area between the structure itself out to the paved portion of First Avenue. It's one of those... Again, we run into it on East Broadway. It's one of those situations where the deed line is actually behind the paved area of the roadway. So that does create a situation where legally, the setback is measured from the structure to the deed line, but you do have this additional area here to create spacing. The other variance for the rear portion of the property, the enclosure of the rear deck and the living space going out into that area where the deck was, necessitated the side yard variance. Again, because of the fact that this is a corner lot, we have two front yards. We refer to the basic west side of the property, or the northwest side of the property, as being the side yard. And then we have the rear yard currently having some 27 feet in that zone. The requirement is 25 feet, so that, you know, this creates the situation where you're having building over what is existing structure right now. So that's the layout of the property as it sits on the lot itself. In terms of the elevations, we have the existing conditions, and again, showing the porch as it is now, looking at the house from First Avenue. This is open porch area, and again, porch area to the rear of the property. But the proposal, the elevations for the proposed dwelling, shows those areas being filled in with living space. In the front, it's this area here where the living room is brought out, and in the back here, I think it's behind where the kitchen area would be, and then bedrooms on the second floor. So the point we really want to stress here is there is a hardship. It's not increasing the side yard setbacks. It's bringing the addition out flush with the existing structure. And again, because of the fact it's a non-conforming lot on a corner, you're really, you know, caught in that situation where you have to hold the front yard setbacks off of each of those two streets. I also have the floor plans, but I wanted to emphasize the layout based on the survey and the elevations. So that's it. If you have any questions, Larry and Sheri are both here. But again, they want to make an investment in terms of turning this into their full-time residence. They have owned this property for 24 years, and again, have hired Ray Oliver, who does this excellent work around town, to do the renovation for them, so...
Okay, pretty much like you had said, the footprint's the same. All the open porch below is going to be closed in for living.
Correct.
Elevation's the same. I'm glad you pointed it out on the front sidewalk, though, because there's another, what, seven to eight feet of actual...
Yeah, and like I said, I remember that came up in those Tanglewood applications, and, you know, the point we were stressing there was we were actually providing more than what we were applying for, because there was area between the deed line and the actual city right of way.
Well, it could be missed here, actually, unless it is brought to our attention. Sarah, you have a question?
Yeah, the first and second floor decks I'm seeing on the right-hand side of the house, those are additions?
No. No, they're there now. The ones on the side, yeah.
Okay, great.
They're there now.
Okay.
But the decks are getting closed into living space.
Right. These two, right here, this is...
The front and the back are getting filled in, and I'm seeing some on the side as well.
The ones on the side are the same. There's not going to be a change to that.
Great.
Any other questions?
So the rear decks are going to become living space?
Right.
Okay. And then you got the rear steps that you need a variance for to get out of that, right?
Those weren't included because of the fact that there are steps there now.
Okay.
Right.
So they don't have to be included?
Yeah, okay, but it's a closed area, right. I was told that that area in the back is actually a shower area, but it is part of the enclosed... It is part of the enclosed living area.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I will submit to you an email that I got from Dennis Garvey. Mr. Garvey lives next to the Shambrams on First Avenue. They basically would be the only people affected by any construction here in terms of any claim of any loss of view out to the sound or infringement on their property. And Mr. Garvey has submitted an email saying that he has no objection to the property.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any more questions for Mr. Lynch? Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Your comments, your thoughts. They're pretty much, I mean, the footprint isn't changing. They're closing in the structure. The side deck is... Ms. Ferrante had questioned that, but nothing's changed in there. Like we had mentioned, the front is 21.8 from the edge of the sidewalk there. That's not from the street. I don't have any problem.
But there's already structure there anyway. It's just being built up. Yeah.
Mr. Sota, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. Everything's there already, you know?
Okay, we need a motion. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Approval is based on the narrowness of the lot and all construction to be conformed to the survey by Cottis Bodie.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Thomas?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. New business? Any new business? Okay, how about a staff update? Mr. Harris, you look like you have some new business.
We're all still here.
I just wanted to point out, there's copies of amendments to the planning and zoning regulation books. They have your names on them, literally. If you would just grab one on the way out, that'd be great.
Okay, staff update, we covered. Acceptance of the minutes from January 12th? Need a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Applications for next month? You already have one? Well, a continuance. I won't be here next month. Mr. Haberman will be the chairman. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.